Try again.
All right. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of June 19th, 2023 to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Murray, the counselor and vice chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the deputy clerk demand. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Also at this time, please ensure that your cell phone is on silent or turned off. And lastly, the town of Lincoln council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the closed captioning button on the bottom right of the video. I would like to take this opportunity to read a land acknowledgement. The town of Lincoln, being part of Niagara region, is situated on treaty land. This land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as the Hadawand Rock, the Hadawashani, and the Anishinaabe, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people from across Turtle Island that live and work in Niagara today. The regional municipality of Niagara stands with all Indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands on which we live. We'll now move to the roll call. Members of council are in attendance with regrets from councillor Rinjima and councillor Pachariba. We also have staff in attendance, both in person and remotely. Moving on to item number three, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to the confirmation of the agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, statutory public meetings. We have no statutory public meetings this evening. Item number six, our consent agenda. We are now considering the consent agenda inclusive of the age-friendly and active community advisory committee minutes of April 13th, 2023. Would any member of council like to remove this item from the consent agenda to discuss? All right. All right, there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Timmers. That all items listed under the heading of consent agenda for Monday, June 19th, 2023 be adopted as recommended. Age-friendly and active community advisory committee minutes of April 13th, 2023. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, vice chair. That motion is now open for voting. And that motion now closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the planning and economic development portion of this agenda. We have no delegations this evening, so we move immediately to 7.2 reports. We are now considering report PD-27-23 regarding official plan and zoning bylaw amendment amendment applications by Prudential's general partner at 3335 North Service Road, Commercial Mixed Use Block, Prudential Landing. Do members of council have any questions? All right, there being no discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Miklech. That committee recommend to council the approval of official plan amendment application, PLOPA 2023 0043, and zoning bylaw amendment application, PLZBA 2023 0044, in the name of Prudential's General Partner Inc. for 3335 North Service Road, and council enact and pass the official plan amendment attached as appendix B of report PD-27-23 to amend the official plan policies for the subject lands and cancel enact and pass zoning bylaw amendment attached as appendix C of report BD-27-23 to amend the site-specific general commercial, GC-29, zone regulations for the lands, and council deemed that zoning bylaw conforms to the official plan for the town of Lincoln, and council declare that they have considered all of the written and oral submissions and agrees with the planning report analysis and recommendations, and finds that these applications meet Planning Act criteria, is consistent with the provincial policy statement, and complies with the growth plan, the Niagara region official plan, and the town of Lincoln official plan. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, vice chair. That vote is now open for voting. And I will close the vote, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now continue with reports and will consider report PD-29-23, Bill 109, Implementation and Process Improvements. Our director of planning and development will speak to this report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in continuation to some previous reports the staff brought forward in response to Bill 109, which, as you can see in the report, serves to shorten timelines for processing planning applications. You'll recall a few months ago, we brought a report forward, which is attached as an appendix to this report about how we expedite some of the planning processes and look at enhancements in terms of how we conduct those processes and move things along, recognizing that we don't have as long once we deem an application complete. So some of the measures you see in this report that we're bringing forward tonight are more on the pre-consultation stage. So at the very beginning, the outset before an actual application is even submitted, we've looked at how we go through the pre-consultation process, looking at better delineating. You know, there are certain instances where there are more major applications that require a little bit higher level of rigor, a little bit more in terms of deliverables that we don't normally ask for right at the outset. And really, the intent of that is to ensure that as we get into the actual application itself subsequently, that there would be less back and forth between the town and the applicant, less resubmissions. The end goal is to arrive at a better product from the get-go, even before we deem the application complete. So we've been looking at updating some of our deliverables and what we require for those which are outlined in this report, as well as looking at how we deem an application complete too. So not only are we asking for certain deliverables as we do now in the pre-consultations, but in conjunction with some work that's been done around the region with regional staff and staff from other lower-tier municipalities, we've looked at standardizing some terms of reference for typical deliverables for planning applications, things like your traffic impact assessment, your functional servicing reports, those main components to make sure that we're better outlining what constitutes an actual deliverable. Currently, right now, the way it goes is a lot of times when we get these submission requirements, they're not quite in line with what, you know, the deliverables that staff had in mind. There's some discrepancies. Sometimes there's incomplete information. So these terms of reference, the idea is that they will guide production of better documents with the appropriate information from the get-go without having to go back and forth. Another big piece to this is just in terms of how we deal with the public consultation piece. Right now, when we deem an application complete, we schedule for things like zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments, an open house, which is a non-statutory requirement. That's over and above what the Planning Act requires, and the statutory public meeting. We looked at varying ways in which we do this moving forward. Some municipalities even bring, you know, they bring the statutory public meeting and the staff recommendation forward the very same night, which, you know, staff didn't, don't really agree with that approach just because if there is anything that comes out of the dialogue for the public meeting, there's no opportunity to address it. So what we're proposing is that we move the open house up to being undertaken before we actually receive a complete application. That is actually a requirement to have those meetings minuteed. We still work with the applicant to circulate the same residents, councillors, the agencies that would have been circulated in the first place, but we're going to be asking for it to be completed in advance of the actual application process starting. So that's a big change, and really what that does is that allows us to move when we hold the statutory public meeting up further in the process so that we can still come back with a subsequent recommendation at a different night. So those are some of the main measures that we're proposing, just again, looking at process enhancements and trying to stick handle planning applications a little bit better, given the more tight turnaround timelines for Bill 109. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Bruder. Do any of council have questions they'd like to bring forward at this time? Councillor Reimer? Yeah, I don't know which. Yeah, which one? Sure. Okay. Just didn't hold it long enough.
No problem. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report to Melissa and to Matt. Just a question regarding, on page two, the province is going to prescribe municipalities where refunding is not going to apply. And as such, we are not among those prescribed. Do we know, has there been a date set for that, or is there any more clarity in the fog? Through you, Chair Murray.
Through you, Chair. Thanks for the reminder, councillor, because I was going to touch on that in my opening comments. You're right. Bill 97 kind of proposed that flexibility in terms of there might be municipalities where this whole refund of planning applications don't apply. They can be named by the province, but no municipalities have been added to that list to date. We haven't heard anything further in that regard. So July 1st is the implementation of Bill 109 timelines, but, you know, we've been waiting to see if there's been any input in that regard. We, in the comments, and I knew in Grimsby's comments as well, you know, municipalities that are generally smaller, under 75,000 people, we suggested that that should be, you know, the rough criteria in terms of maybe those where planning application fees aren't refunded just because from a resource standpoint, an impact standpoint. But again, haven't heard anything yet.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Chair Murray, thank you.
Councillor Timmers?
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to Director Bruder, I had the same question around the refunding, but we don't, we don't need to. I think that was answered, so I don't need to ask any further. Just around the public consultation piece, it makes a lot of sense that the open house would be held prior to a complete application. Are we going to be, you said that they're not mandated, so will we be continuing, and how many open houses do we typically have? I guess that's my question. Are we changing that as well, or?
Through you, Madam Chair. We're not changing the amount. We're still going to be requiring that applicants undertake open houses for the same applications that they were before. We're just moving it to where it happens up earlier in advance of deeming an application complete. In some ways, again, I, and I think I was picking it up a little bit in what you were saying, councillor. It is a good thing just because you get the comments even earlier in the process, before the concept's even finalized. And as a requirement of a complete application, we would require the minutes, the mailing list, circulation lists, and all those things that we would typically keep on file anyways, just to demonstrate that that has been done, and it's been undertaken. So still undertaking the same open house style, one-on-one type meeting, it's just going to be earlier in the process.
Okay. All right. That makes perfect sense. I think that'll save, you know, applications from being sent back many, many times if all the, you know, comments and input is given upfront. That certainly makes a lot of sense. So thank you, Director Bruder. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Timmers. I have no others in the queue if there are no further questions. All right, I have a motion moved by councillor Burnet. That committee receive and file for information, report PD-29-23 regarding Bill 109 Implementation and Process Improvements, and endorse the proposed updates to planning application processes as outlined in report PD-29-23. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, vice chair. That vote is now open. And I will close the vote, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Director Bruder and your staff. We appreciate the work that you and your team put into this recommendation as we're trying to pivot to respond to the new legislation. Thank you. There being no additional reports to consider for the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. We have now concluded the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. We will now rotate and allow councillor and Chair Tony Burnet to assume the chair at this time for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda. Thank you.
We have now reached the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda. Item 8.1, we have no delegations this evening. 8.2 reports, we will now consider the Community Services 2022 update. The Director of Community Services will now provide a presentation. Shannon, please go ahead.
Shannon, give us one moment, and we'll get that up on the screen for you.
Thank you. Great. Good evening, Mary Sten, Chair Burnet, and members of council. It's my pleasure this evening to deliver the Community Services 2022 Year in Review, and I apologize for not being able to attend in person tonight. With over 40 services delivered by the department, we're very proud of how what we do directly impacts Lincoln residents each and every day. Our 2022 Year in Review presentation highlights key program and service accomplishments, seasonal operations, and corporate and social infrastructure projects, and capital investments. This particular slide shows the high-level core functions and responsibilities, from arts, culture, and heritage promotion to the development of our parks and open space, implementation of recreational programming and special events, community development, outreach that we started during the pandemic and continue today, volunteer management, our horticulture and community beautification, management of our parks, facilities, cemeteries, cemeteries, and forestry operations, as well as customer service, user group support, administration, and community outreach. In addition to these high-level categories of service you see here, the goals of Community Services Department remain to enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors by offering parks, facilities, and programs that maximize individual and community health and well-being, to increase the capacity of user and community groups as sustainable and vibrant contributors to the community, to support the renewal and reinvestment in our parks, facilities, cemeteries, and green space, to provide services which are sustainable, flexible, affordable, in response to community need, and in response to changing demographics and industry trends. It's also to improve the economic development and residential development opportunities by investing in programming spaces and facilities across the municipality. We continue to diversify and grow revenue streams by continuously identifying new and expanded grant opportunities, and we've strengthened our partnership and industry stakeholder work through partnerships such as those with Vinland Research and Innovation Center, MPCA, Pro, OPA, to undertake research, advocate for, and advance and strengthen the importance of parks, recreation, and public and open spaces. Next slide, please. So as we pause here on a slide that doesn't have any stats or any words, I want to bring it all back to the fact that, well, for most of us, it feels as though the global pandemic was a long time ago. And yet it really wasn't. Through the first quarter of 2022, facility openings continued to happen. Capacity limits continued to increase, and proof of vaccination requirements changed. The regulations and restrictions all had an impact on our programs and services in 2022. But as you will see in what follows, we have much to be proud of. Next slide, please. So this slide highlights, and we've broken tonight's presentation up by Recreation and Culture and Public and Open Spaces, and this slide highlights some of the key stats from our Recreation and Culture side. So 13 events were hosted, 16 flag raisings, 27 good citizens were recognized, and I was proud to be part of that event as the MC last year. 12,200 participants in various events, from rotary opening to many of the activities that take place in our parks and facilities. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the wonderful testimonials that we received. So we regularly survey our participants and the families, and we ask them to give us feedback, and we ask them to tell us how we're doing, and this is just an example of that. Next slide, please. And our recreation and programs, there were 130 recreation programs, 861 program participants, over 4,000 summer drop-in program visits. So that's when we set up the pickleball courts and the basketball courts and the various activities in our facility, and people can just drop in without formally registering. 220 Lincoln Senior Member Club, Club members. That group is continuing to grow. The Lincoln Community Center, and you'll see on another slide, is continuing to expand its activities. And again, testimonials from parents, talking about the various programs they've participated in, how they love the activities in the town. And I think it's just very, very positive news. Next slide, please. Holiday and summer camps, eight weeks, total of 934 participants. Some great photos, and again, some great testimonials of the work that staff undertook in the summer, even though we were just coming out of the pandemic and people were, while they were excited and anxious to register and participate, you know, there was still some hesitancy in going back into in person. Next slide, please. Discover Your Park. So this is a program that has proved to be very successful. We take our summer staff and our equipment, and we get out to the park at various dates. You'll see all of those dates this summer located on our events calendars. So across the nine different dates and the seven different locations, we had 585 attendees come out. This is a great way to showcase not only our parks, but also what programs are available and what staff are doing, both in the parks and in our facilities when they're running the formal programs. Next slide, please. Our aquatic programs. 983 hours of swimming lessons. Over 1,200 swimmers registered in our Life Saving Society swim lessons. Almost 1,000 hours of public swim, and over 10,000 swimmers attended our public swim programs. And again, just a couple of the testimonials from residents and participants. Next slide, please. Arenas and sports fields. Over 3,000 hours of arena rentals. Over almost 5,000 public skate participants. Almost 6,000 hours of sport-filled rentals. And 1,600 hours of public skate. These stats demonstrate that our facilities are utilized and that our programs are much appreciated and much valued by our residents. Next slide, please. Lincoln Seniors Club. So if you haven't been to the Lincoln Community Center in some time, I encourage you to good drop by. We do have staff there. Whenever the facility is open, there is a reception desk there, and we do staff that desk. The members are growing. So you'll see there that the stats are 228, with 11 members being over 90 years of age. 11 different regular activities take place. Almost 52 hours of weekly programming, as well as drop-in programs. We have the last couple of years received the maximum in provincial grants. And I know you heard more about that a couple of weeks ago. And last year, we received 20,000 in special funds for facility upgrades. So we're able to do things like carpeting and new furniture and refelting the billiard tables and those types of activities that we work very closely with the seniors club in defining. And then again, another testimonial about the club itself. Next slide, please. So Play Lincoln is connected. We've been virtual for some time. These are our followers on Facebook, our subscribers to the monthly newsletter, which continues to increase, and followers on Instagram. Next slide, please. Now we'll move over to the Public and Open Spaces Division. Next slide. Our operational highlights. 480 demand work orders, requests completed. So we have an internal system for work requests. When individuals in various facilities, whether it's our fire stations, our Fleming Center, our libraries, identify something that needs done, it could be something that needs to repair, be repaired. It could be something that we, you know, supplies that are needed more of. These are our demand work order requests. We had over 7,000 routine scheduled site visits resulting in over 12,000 completed inspections and work requests. So we do have a software program that we input our inspections into, and this is very important for us if we ever have to produce records showing our inspections when they're done, on the dates, what was inspected, and any of the comments and the statuses. And then we also added new Fleming Center lobby, and I think most of council has seen that. It looks phenomenal. We can wipe it down. We can change the configuration. And we've since added, this year, I know this is a 2022, but we've added similar furniture over at the Jordan Arena. Next slide, please. In our forestry area, 112 trees planted. These were both on our streets and in our parks. 60 trees were replaced. 30 streets. We conducted the tree pruning, and 105 forestry work requests completed. Next slide. As council is aware, we were very successful in getting five out of five blooms with Communities in Bloom last year, and we're looking forward to participating in that again next year. I think we take a lot of pride in the work that's done, and it's certainly nice to be recognized by an agency outside of the organization. Next slide, please. Our park enhancements. So as council will recall, this was a Capitol Park enhancements project where we said, you know, we're going to pilot some things. We're going to act on what we've heard from residents that they would like to see. And so we were able to take the monies out of that park enhancements and upgrade our outdoor washroom seasonally, install safety gates in particular locations, put out four water bottle refill stations, public barbecues in our Charles Daley Park, three trail and walkway connections, one in particular through Jack Simpson Park, baseball dugout covers, soccer pitches. We have pitches that we put out more for recreational use in our parks, trail lighting, and we upgraded the splash pad feature at Angelino Brookridge Park. Next slide, please. Our play surface, our play space resurfacing started last year. We were able to complete seven parks, and as most of you are aware, we've already been able to complete a couple more this year. So that's the list of the parks, and we're continuing to finish that project off this year. Next slide, please. Ashby Drive Park. In 2022, we completed the detailed designs of the walkway in the park, the installation of walkways and seating areas, the North Shade Sale, the bicycle playground itself. The fitness equipment was installed, site furniture, trees. A very, a very exciting observant landscape research project that we've worked very closely with Vinland Research and Innovation Center on. New play equipment and rubberized surfacing. These, when, at the time of the presentation, those things were underway. They've actually both been completed now. So we are planning a ribbon cutting and grand opening of this park for let me just double check that before I give you the date. I believe it's August. It is August 19th, Saturday, August 19th, and I believe you have a hold the date in your calendars. Next slide, please. You've heard much about our Jordan Hollow Indigenous Cultural Park, and you'll hear a little bit more after this presentation tonight on that renaming. But the design concept was approved by council. We've been coordinating, ongoing coordination with Niagara region on the 20-mile arch bridge replacement. We've consulted with the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, consultation with NEC, additional grant funding secured, two pieces of Public Art Commission, detailed design continues, and park renaming. And I stand corrected, the date is August 12th for the opening of the Ashby Park. My apologies. Next slide, please. And finally, our cemeteries area. I just think these, I barely need to say anything because I look at the before and after of our cemetery restoration work. It's incredibly special. And I encourage you to go out and see it if you haven't. We also completed the Mount Osborne Cemetery entrance and driveway, and these are just a few additional stats of work being done by the cemetery's administrator. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So these are assets actually from last year, but I will let council and the public watching and, and attendance today know that our Harvest Pioneer Day is taking place on Saturday, September sixteenth this year. And our Sling on King event is taking place on Saturday, September twenty-third, so a day earlier. But these were last year's assets, just showing, uh, some of those assets. So I'm joined by, um, oh, sorry, I actually have a conclusion. So post-pandemic, uh, everyone knows and appreciates the value of our parks, open spaces, recreational facilities and related programming and special events. The programs and services provided by Community Services Department are essential. They're critically important to maintaining a vitality, a vital quality of life, ensuring the physical and mental health and well-being of families, individuals from eight to eighty and vulnerable populations. These important municipal services contribute immeasurably to the social, economic and environmental well-being of a community that is well-connected, vibrant, resilient. And they contribute, continue to contribute to the town of Lincoln's ability and capacity to remain a place to grow, a place to prosper, a place to belong. I'm joined by the management team members, Sarah Ainge and Dave Warden. So I turn it over now to council. If you have any questions for the team.
Uh, thank you, Shannon, for the Community Services, uh, two thousand and twenty-two update and, uh, do council, do members of council have any questions? Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you to, to Shannon. Again, it's not a question. It's just, uh, an observation. Uh, again, when you look at the amount of things that you and your team accomplished this year, I think any, any community, any council would be proud to have that done over the course of a term. And I think, uh, over what you've done, uh, over the course of last term, I think any council or community would be happy to have that done over the course of a couple of terms. Uh, every, every time, every example that there's a requirement from the community, a request, uh, from council, from, from anybody. Again, you, you and your team are always, uh, so, um, immediately available. Uh, you, there's responses that are beyond timely. Um, and I just want to let you know how much it's appreciated, uh, by, by myself, probably by the rest of council as well and by the community out there. Again, if I could give gold stars, it would be an enormous one. Again, I want to thank you and your team for everything you do. Uh, I think this report is not just a reflection of the progress you guys have made during, uh, a tough year. But again, a, an excellent report card on, on the value that Community Services brings to the town of Lincoln and just want to say thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. That's very kind.
Counselor Timmers.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Chair Brene. My, my comments are fairly similar, similar to, uh, Counselor Russell's. I'm so proud of when I look at these, like, all the events and the activities and the numbers and, um, the services that we're providing to our community and the people who live here. And, um, there are always fantastic events. The programming numbers are just way out there for the population we have. Um, I guess my two, my two interests, um, it's not really a surprise to anyone, would be the, the Lincoln Center and the seniors', uh, programming and the membership. So have you noticed, um, an increase in membership numbers? And I, you know, these are a lot, there's a lot of, uh, programming going on there. So just wondering what you're seeing, what's trending this year.
So thank you. Thank you, Council. I'll start and then maybe Sarah can add some comments. Um, we are hearing from staff uh, that our, our seniors' numbers are growing and, and that's because our, our community is changing. So we, we have heard, and I've heard this directly from Lori Laird and others, that, you know, new seniors to the area have come in, they've asked about the Lincoln Community Center, they've asked about the seniors' club. Um, I'm ever hearing from our wonderfully passionate pickleball players that, that, that particular activity is, is growing and, and they would love us to, the town to, to have an indoor pickleball, uh, court with, with, which more than just the Lincoln Community Center right now. But yes, we're definitely seeing an increase in numbers. And, and I know Sarah can speak to some of the, um, neat things that are going on, which I think people bring friends and then introduce them to the fact that there is the Lincoln Seniors Club.
Thank you, Director McKay, through you, Chair, to Counselor Timmers. I can add a couple of comments. We are seeing an increase in membership at the Lincoln Seniors Club. Uh, we're only mid-year at this point, but we're trending to exceed last year's, um, numbers. So that's always a positive thing and we're excited about that. We're also adding additional programming this summer, um, for the first time at the Lincoln Community Center uh, by request of many of the groups who typically, um, go away for the summer and don't participate, but are, are wanting to. So that's a great thing and we're, we're happy to, um, ensure that that can occur. So additional programming hours being added this summer for those groups. And, uh, many of you will remember as well that we were the recipient of a seniors' community grant, which was really the work of Lori Laird, who applied for that grant and was successful in getting some, uh, funding to be able to operate a London Learn, um, program, which was very successful over the fall, winter months, that really introduced a number of our seniors to activities they may have never tried before, whether it be Nordic pole walking or pickleball or, um, different activities that we already have at the facility and some new ones as well. So that helped to really build the interest in what's going on there and we're, we're seeing the benefit of that now, uh, in the membership increase.
Well, that's, that's great. Thank you so much. Um, just a fantastic report and, and thank you for all that you do. It's fantastic. Thank you, Chair Brene.
Counselor Reimer.
Chair Brene, thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments to follow up on, uh, a couple of specifics to follow on Counselor Russell's, uh, heels. Two, two areas that, that I would say I've, not to take away from the multitude of, uh, I have numerous other programs and services, uh, Director McKay, but rubberized playground surfaces, um, incredible amount of comments and, and just from people in the community who, who would, uh, who would have experienced them. I've experienced them with my granddaughter, many parks. Uh, that's a big, that was a big win. A lot, a lot of positive feedback and a lot of people are, uh, are really happy about those rubberized playgrounds. And another thing just from our observation would be the way that our, uh, Community Services engages the public. They, they make them feel, uh, part of the community. The, the flag raising, sometimes maybe we don't think some of these things are, are, are a big deal. But I know from the feedback that I've got, the, the, the flag raisings, the Good Citizens Awards, Play Lincoln, those are all ways that we make, um, the general public, all the residents feel, uh, engaged and part of the community. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Chair Brene.
Thank you, Councilor.
Counselor Mikulak. Thank you, Chair Brene, through you to Shannon. Thank you very much for this year-end report. Um, I'm always impressed and amazed by the creativity of your staff and, um, all the programming that they offer. Um, question I have is just with regards, you know, there's a lot of talk about COVID and its challenges and, you know, how we dealt with COVID uh, with our parks and that sort of thing. And, and one thing I remember we were having was security guards at our parks. And now we don't have security guards and I'm just wondering if there's any concern about the parks and not everybody's at the parks for the right reasons. And if, if you're working with her, how do we work with bylaw to ensure that, um, the right people are using the parks?
Uh, thank you, Counselor, through Chair Brene to the counselor. So we did have security during the pandemic. That was mostly because of the restrictions on numbers. Um, and we had to at some point, you know, restrict the ice, the outdoor, um, rink and, and different spaces. So that's why we had security. Um, as to the right individuals visiting our parks, we're working very closely with, uh, both, both municipal law enforcement during the day when things happen as well as NRPS. Um, we recently had a meeting, the CIO, myself, Director of Economic and Community Development and Communications, just to talk about, um, you know, encouraging residents to, when they see things and, and, and they're not calling the town necessarily, but when they see things because they live close to the park, that they're making the calls to the non-emergency NRPS number, if it's a non-emergency. If it is an emergency where someone could be hurt, something's being vandalized, they can call the nine-one-one number and NRPS. And NRPS has encouraged us to encourage residents to do that at the time of the incident because it is difficult for them to follow up. We are also, uh, talking about potentially, you know, in the future of needed surveillance in, in some of our parks. Um, we currently are doing a pilot project in, uh, in Ashby Drive Park with surveillance that has proven to be quite successful in deterring vandalism um, and, and other activities. So we continue to look at, you know, what we can do to ensure that these spaces remain safe for the, 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 the population at large, for the visitors and for the family. And we continue to inform NRPS more closely with them as we're notified of, um, unacceptable behavior or mischief that, that is happening in the community. And, and I think we will be talking about, uh, potentially a, a joint event to, to help communicate some of these things to the public, um, in a, in a greater, larger fashion.
Thank you very much for that answer. I think that's, I think that's important. Um, um, just a follow-up, just, um, is there contact information at the parks where there's contact phone numbers? Is there signage indicating for residents using the parks if they see something, um, that's not quite, uh, right? That, you know, to, to get immediate or a timely response? Is there?
Thank you, Counselor, through the chair. Yes, we do have park signage indicates the hours and, uh, it indicates a, a municipal town number. It does not have the NRPS, uh, NRPS's non-emergency number and, and that's something we could definitely discuss with NRPS uh, and get their approval for if they agree to.
Perfect. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mary Sten.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Shannon, thank you very much for this very comprehensive report. Um, you've had a lot of successes and I must compliment you on the balance that your programs have brought to arts and culture as well as the more traditional sports and, um, um, features that, uh, that we've had in the town for a long time. Your team has had great success with fundraising and that certainly is, um, it's not only welcome, but it makes things happen. And I know that's always very time-consuming and I want to thank you very much for the effort that's put behind that. I believe that, um, Community Services has a lot of inputs, influence and input across departments. And I, I would like to acknowledge, um, I think we all know that that is the case and just want to add that on to, to your report. In the area of climate change and adaptation impacts, um, I hope that, um, you'll accept, uh, some credit and maybe include, uh, credit where it's due in future reports because I don't know, um, I mean, there are just so many elements of that that come back to the way things are done by your team. And, and so it's good to have that reinforcement. I want to also acknowledge those and thank you very much. Um, maybe we'll see those in some future reports. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mary Sten.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a couple of comments, uh, Shannon and the team. Um, yeah, certainly, uh, to echo, uh, Counselor Russell's comments, you know, we've come a long way. I can remember back in two thousand and fourteen and, uh, Shannon, shortly after you came, came on board, you know, asking about a Parks Master Plan and the answer was, we don't have one. So, you know, we started with a Parks Master Plan and, uh, we've, we've come a long way. Um, you know, to think that we've constructed Rotary Park, uh, we've built our first Dog Park, uh, and we've continued to listen to the residents, uh, whenever they've reached out to, to have issues with Mount Osborne Cemetery. I remember, uh, walking that with the CIO and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Warden. And, you know, within, uh, within a year, we had privacy fencing, we had water stations uh, throughout the, uh, throughout the cemetery and we had new roadways. So we've listened to the residents and we have, uh, we have reacted. Um, so certainly we've, uh, we've, we've done marvelous, marvelous work in Community Services. Um, I'm wondering, Shannon, uh, if you could comment recently at one of our touchpoints with, uh, Vice Chair Mikulak and myself. You spoke about some of the, uh, obstacles that you're, um, you're currently dealing with in terms of, uh, lifeguards and how that might affect the hours of our operations of, of some of our pools. I'm wondering if you could comment on that and just maybe talk about what the plan is moving forward.
Thank you, Chair Brene. I'll start and I will maybe ask, uh, Associate Director Ainge to, to add a few more comments. So, uh, we did recently prepare a, a memo, a briefing note for our council to outline that, um, unfortunately, we are going to have to reduce some of our aquatic programming as a result of not having been able to recruit, um, what we would deem a fourth crew. So in order to staff both of our outdoor pools, uh, we need a total of four crews and we've been able to successfully recruit three. This is not a, um, a, a Lincoln-only problem. This is not a Niagara Region-only problem. This is actually a national problem with less and less, um, staff coming up with their lifeguarding certifications and the, and their ability to, uh, to work in, in the pools, not only in the outdoor pools, but in all municipal pools and in private pools as well. So we will be reducing, um, some of the programming at the Jordan Lions Outdoor Pool this summer. Um, we will be able to continue at AFG with the full programming as we have in the past. But we will be having to, uh, cut public swim and, and close the pool on the Sunday. Uh, we have one crew and, and obviously they cannot work seven days a week. Uh, and we've had to reduce, reduce some of the midweek. So staff took a look at, um, stats from the previous years, not just last year, but trending. They did an analysis and they made the decisions on the cuts based on the data that they looked at and, and the best recommendation. So Sarah, I don't know if you'd like to add a additional details about that.
Uh, thanks, Director McKay, through you to the Chair. Uh, all of that information is accurate. So all of the programming decisions for the summer were based on previous historicals. Um, so we did prioritize learn-to-swim programming, uh, as that's really fundamental to why we operate both of the outdoor pools and, uh, as much available public and leisure swimming opportunities as possible. So while there are reductions, I'm going to use that word rather than cuts. Um, we're hopeful that, you know, we are still actively recruiting and looking for staff. Uh, we actually just brought on another lifeguard just this week. So, um, we still remain hopeful that we may be able to find some additional staff and, and definitely would entertain any applicants that are, are looking for summer work, um, to, um, reach out to us, um, through our Human Resources Department. Uh, this is really a sector-wide issue as, as Director McKay mentioned, and it's certainly not limited to lifeguards and swimming instructors. However, most recently, the province did lower the age, uh, for, uh, lifeguards to fifteen. So that's not something that we'll see an immediate impact from this summer, um, because obviously people need to be trained. But we're hopeful that that will help for next summer to be able to recruit more staff for our outdoor pools.
That's great. Thank you, Sarah. Um, so just another question, uh, I had, um, through to Shannon. Shannon, the mayor used the word balance and, um, uh, you know, I, I think over the last number of years, you know, we've had residents reaching out to us, especially during COVID, you know, talking about lighting in our parks and, um, and just making, making enhancements. But, but with that, um, you know, comes vandalism, comes graffiti. I recently sent some pictures with regards to, uh, uh, some broken lights that have happened up at Prokitch Park over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we continue to see vandalism. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, uh, you know, Counselor, um, Mikulak mentioned about the, the policing and, and cameras, but, but where is the balance as this continues to, to escalate? To make sure that, you know, the investments in our parks are, are going to be, you know, looked after and maintained and yet provide the safety to our residents as we, as we move forward?
Well, thank you, Counselor Brene. I mean, we talk about that often. Um, we talk about, you know, how we stay informed of what's happening. How, when we're not in our parks at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night because it's dark and, and we don't really want people in our parks when they're not supposed to be in our parks, but they are. That we need the, the eyes of the residents to be reporting these things. So, um, you know, balance may end up being surveillance in not all, but some of our parks. And I think, um, as citizens, and this is just a general comment on my part, we are becoming more accustomed to surveillance in our public spaces because of what happens in our public spaces. So the balance would be ensuring that we can, um, stay on top of what's happening in our public spaces when we're not in our public spaces. And quite frankly, when our public spaces are not deemed open, we don't want people going into the, the parks after hours. If they're there, especially for mischief and no good. Uh, but we need to know if that's happening and we're relying on our residents to tell us. So, um, you know, lighting is a, is So, you know, lighting is a double-edged sword. We've talked about this with council. We want people to have sufficient light in parks to be able to get through the parks when they need to early on. But we also have to be mindful of the residents who live close to our parks. And that's certainly the case in a park like Prokitch where the pathway that goes around the park is not far from the backyards of residents who live there. So providing, you know, a balance of lighting that isn't too bright for the neighboring residents, but bright enough for individuals to feel safe, yet doesn't invite, you know, activity that we don't want to be happening. I think it's about an engaged community. It's about a community that's, you know, talking and bringing things forward to not only the town staff, certainly town staff, but also NRPS. And, you know, we had some mischief happen at the Fleming Center this weekend. And when we reported it to the Staff Sergeant today, because it didn't come to us at the time, the Staff Sergeant said the best thing for both staff and residents to do is report it at the time. We can act at the time. We can get somebody out there into those places at the time to try to deal with it, but to follow up and to try to figure out what might have happened and who might have been responsible, it's a little more difficult. So we are encouraging residents to reach out. It's during the daytime, we'll, you know, we'll, we can get over there. We can get to our facilities. If it's in the evening when our parks are closed and our facilities are closed and we don't have staff, that's a little bit more challenging, but we do want residents to report it and we want residents to know that we are aware and we're working very closely with NRPS to try to figure out solutions and solutions that balance protecting the individuals who live in close proximity of these spaces, but also, you know, wanting to shut this down.
That's great. Well, thank you, Director McKay. We appreciate this update report and we thank you for all the good work that you and your entire staff are doing.
Thank you, Chair Brene.
There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Russell that we receive and file as information, the presentation regarding the Community Services twenty twenty-two update. And I will now ask our clerk, our deputy clerk, to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair, and that vote is now open. And that closes the vote and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now consider the renaming of Parkland at thirty thirty-nine King Street, Report C S dash zero seven dash twenty-three. Do members of council have any questions? There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Reimer to receive for information, Report C S dash zero seven dash twenty-three, regarding the proposed Parkland renaming for Parkland located at thirty thirty-nine King Street and approve the staff recommendation to rename this Parkland to be known as the Sorisong Park. And I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And I will close that. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no additional reports to consider for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda, we have now concluded the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda. And we will now rotate and allow Counselor and Chair Lynn Timmers to assume the chair at this time for the General Business and Finance Committee Agenda.
Thank you, everyone. We are now at the General Business and Finance Committee Agenda. We have no delegations under reports. We will now consider the Routine Disclosure and Active Dissemination Policy Report, L S dash zero six dash two three. Our Director of Legislative Services Town Clerk will speak to this report.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
I can hear you.
Thanks. This Routine Disclosure and Active Dissemination Policy is before council tonight to ensure that the town of Lincoln is moving towards a more mature, open government program, which is based on the core belief that the public has a right to access the records and proceedings of government to enable greater openness, accountability and engagement. Municipalities are encouraged to determine how they can bring or expand their open government activities. And, you know, as such, Stephanie Belissimo, our Records Coordinator, has done a tremendous job working across the corporation and meeting with all the departments mainly to understand the most requested information that has been required and that's been included as well as other material. And so we've also consulted our legal counsel to ensure all legal aspects have been considered. It's an important project initiative that our department has taken on and that we've completed thus far and we move closer to open government and open data. And hopefully, that explains a little bit about the report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I will open it to council for questions. Counselor Brene, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Timmers. Through you to the clerk. Julie, thanks for this and I certainly, I think this is a very positive thing. I certainly understand why we would want to be more open and transparent. I'm just wondering if there's something that has specifically triggered this coming at this point? Have we had a number of resident complaints? Do we feel that the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act has become too restrictive? Or is this just something that this is the right thing to do?
Thank you, Counselor, and through the Chair to you. So no, we haven't received complaints, Counselor, in terms of any kind of information that has been requested. Right now, all of the information being requested is through a formal F O I, whereas we don't have a policy in place, which we should, which speaks to routine disclosure of information without a formal submission of an F O I or active dissemination. So information that we are actively making the public aware of just without a request. So as we build up our website and with more information coming with our open data, we will probably see a reduction in the F O Is that we do receive and that more information is being actively disseminated to the public, more information is being routinely disclosed as appropriate.
And it's great. Thank you, Clerk. Just a follow-up question. I'm wondering if in the process, we have reached out to other municipalities to see if other municipalities have already got this policy in place? Are we a leader here or are we playing catch-up?
I'll hand it off to Stephanie, but I do want to say that I would say that we are probably a leader in the region with making this policy coming through this evening with council approval. So I would say that we've done extensive research and Stephanie, I'll lead it to you because we have worked with numerous municipalities across Ontario. We've spoken to numerous municipalities and their clerks, as well as our legal counsel did some active research. So Stephanie, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Thank you, Julie. Through you to the Chair. So we have done some extensive research as Julie was mentioning. We had looked at many different policies that have come out and it is something that municipalities are definitely starting to do. But I do believe that we are a leader in this, especially in the region. I know that it's something that's been discussed at our previous Niagara Region Records Group and it's something that people want to start working towards. So I definitely would say we're leading that charge in that way. There have been some several great policies that we were able to draw on. And like we've said, like Julie was mentioning, we have reached out to several municipalities and were able to have what they put together, help to inform our policy and make it very strong.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie.
That's great. That's great, Chair Timmers. That's very positive, very encouraging to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, it's always good when we hear that we're the leader in an area and anything that makes communication and information available to our residents in an easier way is definitely a positive. I have Counselor Michaelak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Timmers. Through you to Julie. Thank you for taking the time to look at this and coming up with this strategy. Just curious, with regards to the financial portion of this, fees are not applicable. You know, if the information can be found on the website. And I understand why that's the case. I understand is to try to, you know, get people to put some effort, you know, into looking things up on their own. But what if you don't have a computer? What if you don't, what if you're not internet savvy? What if you don't have access to technology? What if you're old school, traditional? Are you going to have to pay? Like, what's the realities towards this? And I compare it to like the ArriveCAN app. Like, the government couldn't make people use the ArriveCAN app because if you didn't have a cell phone or access to technology, you couldn't, you can't force people to use technology. So have we considered that with the financial aspect of this?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Counselor. Through the Chair to you. So we'll always work with members of the public, understanding that we're hoping that we can drive as many people to our website as much as possible where that houses most of the open data and available and, you know, information that is accessible. However, knowing that not everybody is computer savvy, as you've just said. So in terms of information that is easy to find, we'll work with that individual and we'll take those cases as individual as they come and work with them determining what information that they're looking for. If it's easy and it's fairly quick to come across or decipher, we'll work with that individual on a case-by-case basis. If it's historical data, if it's being, if it's data that they're requesting, that's going to take some time to do research on. If it's information that we need time or if it's, you know, a certain amount of data that they're requesting in terms of bylaws and minutes and motions and it's going to take significant time to spend and do the research, that's when there will be costs associated with it. But again, we will be working with those individuals on a case-by-case basis to determine the best path forward. We do recognize that the submission we're going to be asking will be that people complete these routine disclosure requests online. However, we will be accounting for those that want to come in person and do it that way. So making sure that we are meeting the needs of the residents depending on the need that they're requesting.
Thank you very much. Through you. And I think I just want to make sure that people aren't nervous or intimidated by, you know, the possibility of a fee and it would, you know, deter them or, you know, make them nervous about making a request for information that, by seeing that possible fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Oh, Madam Clerk, did you have something to add?
I do. I just want to make, so thank you, Chair. We do have a fees and charges bylaw that council passed. And in that fees and charges, there's several fees that are associated with each department. And so I just want to make clear that some of the fees will be significantly less depending on what the type of request is. So it may not be a routine disclosure fee that we charge. It may be just a photocopying fee. It may just be something that's easy done that way. It may just be something that they go to planning and there will be some sort of fee associated with that or a financial fee. So maybe they need a copy of a water bill. So, so Counselor, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, the individual is aware depending on the type of request being asked.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I have Mary Sten next.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report, Julie. This is certainly an example of good governance and good to be on top of that. Will the start date for the availability be prior to nineteen seventy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the Chair to you. So as you know, we do have historical records that date back significantly, you know, before nineteen seventy of our amalgamation of the town of Lincoln. And so Stephanie is, you know, she's an archivist. She's worked on several. We're lucky to have her. And so she's worked on significant archives even with the museum. And so we do have a lot of historical data that, you know, we are working through. And so some of that information could pertain to that. And again, that goes to the research and all of that information on being requested. And so Stephanie would definitely take those requests as they come.
And, and Madam Clerk, again, on the same line, I'm assuming that there could be gaps with the historic information. If members of the public have copies of it, are you looking to have that information in the head, to be in the hands of the town?
I can't account for the, what happened before I came to the town of Lincoln. I'm hoping that we have, you know, our materials that are town-owned. I would be, I welcome any kind of information that any member of the public has that wishes to bring back to the town of Lincoln.
Okay, that's, that's great news. So I'm assuming then that post nineteen seventy, it'll be as complete as, as is realistic.
As complete as what I have currently, Madam Mayor.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. It's a great relief to know that we not only have this policy in place, but we also have, I believe there was an earlier policy that you were working on in regards to the retention of records. And I'm assuming that the two of them go together. Is that a fair assumption?
That is correct. So as, and through the Chair to you, Madam Mayor. As you know, in twenty twenty, we did put through a bylaw, our retention records bylaw, which spoke to Tom rooms, and that's our classification schedule and our retention of records. And so Stephanie has worked alongside of that policy as well as this one, and they do tie together absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mary Sten. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone else in the queue. So there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Murray. The council receive and file for information, Report L S dash zero six dash two three, and that council approved the routine disclosure and active dissemination policy as set out in Appendix A of Report L S oh six two three. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote's now open. And I will now close the vote and that motion carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have no confidential items. Do we have any committee remarks? There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at seven oh eight P M.